Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator-Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator-Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
All right, good morning, everybody. We're going to get started. It is 8:30. I do know that there's an accident on 131, so I'll let everybody slowly get to their seats here. Where's Phil? Oh, Phil's back there. Okay. All right, we are going to call this meeting to order for March 14th. And I ask the clerk to call the roll. Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners Antor, Brevi, Volkowski, Hennessy, Jones, Coleman, Melton, Morgan, Ponstein, Salfeld, Skaggs, Sparks, Vice Chair Steck, Commissioner Talon, Vonk, Voorhees, Womack, Wooden, Chair Bolter. Madam Chair, you have 17 members present, two absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will call on Commissioner Antor for indication.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm looking out at this group, and I'm just noting how much it's changed over the last six months or so. We've got a lot of new faces. In the 10 years I've been here, we've had a lot of turnover, not only here but throughout the county. We no longer have our sheriff. We have a new sheriff in town. And it just reminds us how much, you know, life changes. And it can be pretty brutal sometimes. But isn't it great that we have a Lord and Savior that's always there for us? You know, He is, He was, and He ever shall be. He's there with us at all times, and it's just so reassuring. And I just hope my Lord and Savior is your Lord and Savior, so we can all have that peace that He gives us. And I'd like to pray right now, if we bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, please look down upon our work with favor and help guide us as we move forward on behalf of the citizens of this county. Please forgive us for our indiscretions as we call upon Your Holy Spirit to dwell amongst us now and in the days and months ahead. Please guide and protect all of our elected officials, including our President, members of Congress, our state representatives, and all those charged to protect us through the military and public service. Lord, we pray that You will give all those gathered here this morning wisdom as we make decisions that would reflect Your will, so we can best serve the residents of Kent County. We ask this in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are on to item five on our agenda, and I will call up our Treasurer, Treasurer Ken Parrish, for his annual investment report.
Good morning, everybody. It's a pleasure to be back in front of you today with my annual investment report. Scintillating information for all. I can tell, I can tell, Commissioner. I always start off my presentation the same way, talking about the SLI principle. How many of you remember the SLI principle? Ah, I've got a few of you. All right. That's great to hear. For those of you who don't remember the SLI principle, I don't take credit for making this up, but it refers to our investment principle. And that is that we invest with safety, liquidity, and yield in mind, in that order. And as far as that goes, I'm very proud to say that in over 22 years of being your Treasurer, we've never lost a penny of principal. Safety is our utmost concern, always has been, always will be. After that, we want to make sure that we're investing so that we always have the funds available when we need them, even when curveballs come our way, like, hey, we have the opportunity to buy a building, I need $5 million in the next three days. We're able to handle that for you. So, and then finally, we look at yield, trying to get the best yield that we can within the above parameters. So, this is the top of the report. You all should have received the report from Pam. We basically have money in three different types of investments. We have government securities, federal agencies, federal treasury notes, bonds, those sorts of things. We have some money in some pooled funds that are specific to governmental units in the state of Michigan. And then we have money in a variety of banks and credit unions through CDs, money market accounts, and savings accounts. The government securities, we have roughly $55 million there. Those are all backed by the federal government, so we believe that they're extremely safe. The pooled funds, these are liquid funds. We can take these out any day, every day that we need to. But in the recent interest rate environment, they've been very competitive with longer-term rates. So, we have about $40 million in liquid funds. And then we have about a little over $250 million in banks and credit unions that operate in the state of Michigan, all the way from our smallest investments, just over half a million dollars with the Consumers Credit Union, on up to almost $32 million with the Bank of America. And if I remember right, there's 20 or 21 banks and credit unions on the list right now. It's always been my policy to, particularly those banks and credit unions that operate within Kent County, I'm very open to doing business with them. So, there may be a bank or credit union that you're aware of that you don't see on the list. You might encourage them to give me a call. We have, I'm always willing to meet with them and try to support our community financial We then have about a little over $6 million in a variety of, you know, we have approximately 30 checking accounts that relate to a lot of the different departments and whatnot. As of 12/31, we had about $6 million spread over those various bank accounts. So that our total pool as of 12/31/18 was $355,600,000. That's been relatively, relatively stable over the past several years, and it certainly fluctuates throughout the year as cash comes in and cash goes out, but that's been pretty steady. Under the certificates of deposit and money market section with all the banks, you'll see next to the name of the bank is a number with an asterisk, four-star, five-star, three-star. Those are all ratings given to them by an organization called Bauer Financial. And they're one of the best-known organizations that does rank banks and credit unions throughout the country. And so they, this is their rating system, anywhere from five-star, meaning superior, on down to zero stars. You will see on our list that we have one bank that is listed as a three-star, which is still considered adequate. All the rest are four and five-star banks. So, I monitor this regularly to make sure that they're not seeing something that I'm missing, to make sure that we're, again, with safety in mind. Here's some good news. Last year, the general fund earned about, I think it was about $900,000. This year, we earned $1.5 million in investment income, and the total pool got up to $5.6 million. So, with the interest rate environment rising, we have seen the benefit of that with higher investment earnings. As many of you know, we do offer a local government investment pool to allow the local units to participate in our, in the investing. And we're, that pool, which encompasses all of the county funds as well as the local unit funds, just cracked the 2% mark for our weighted average interest rate. So, we are seeing the income and the interest rise slightly. Here's just a pie chart version of the same numbers. What this, one thing that you can quickly see from this is that both by state law and our policy, we're not allowed to invest more than 25% in any institution, and we are nowhere near that. We have 16% in government agencies that actually were not limited to 25% there, but we're still only at 16%. And the largest single investment we have is only 9% of the total pool in that bank. So, we do try to diversify to make sure that we're, again, keeping our funds real. A few years ago, I think it was Commissioner Talon wanted to know where this money is within the county. And so, I am showing you a breakdown of the various funds within the county. And I will point out and remind you that this is cash balance. This isn't necessarily the fund balance of that particular fund. This is simply the cash that my office manages. So, really, the big three are the EPW Solid Waste Disposal Fund, the General Fund, and the Local Government Investment Fund. Those make up the bulk of it. And then you'll see the list of other funds along the way, down to the miscellaneous, which is a whole slew of funds that are very small amounts, up and down. And each of those funds individually are less than 1% of the total. So, I tried to find a cutoff that was meaningful for you. And finally, I have another fun pie chart that shows you the same breakdown graphic. So, that is my report. I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Any questions? Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Ken.
Good morning, Commissioner.
I see most of your investments are spread in the banks, are spread over mostly four and five. You do have one three in here with a small amount. When does that, is there any other criteria for cutoffs, or if they make the cut? Three is kind of adequate?
It is, and that's why we don't have a lot of money with them. But we still, again, they do operate in Kent County. We do want to try to support them, but we do keep a very close eye on them, as we do all the others as well. But, yeah, so that, I'm comfortable that three is adequate, and, but again, I'm not going to pour, you know, millions and millions of dollars there. We do also look at the size of the bank when we, in determining the amount that we invest with them. So, you know, smaller banks aren't going to get, you know, $15, $20 million anyway, even if they're a five-star bank. Sure.
And I noticed there's one credit union.
Yes.
Relatively new to the mix?
It's been a couple of years now, and they were aggressive enough to approach us and say, you know, they've opened up a few branches. They're based, actually based out of, I think, Kalamazoo County, but they have several branches in Kent County now. And they came and called on me and made a pitch, and it was fine. Like I say, if there are others that you're aware of that operate in Kent County, I'm happy to talk to them as well. I'm not discriminating against any of them. I just, I don't go out looking for new organizations to work with. They've got to come to us.
Thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Ken.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Just a quick question. I know privately, and some of these banks are getting pretty aggressive trying to get money moved. I just moved an account to third, and they offered me, I think, 3% on a money market, which is, you know, it's not a lot, but it's better than what it was, for one year. It was like an introductory offer. It has to be new money coming in. Is there any leverage on your, I mean, can you go down that same trail if you were to say, hey, I want to move something, because they're offering me 3% as opposed to 3%? I'm just not doable.
There's a little bit, but I suspect that when they offered you that, they also wanted you to move all of your banking over there?
Well, I was already there with most of it anyhow.
Okay, yeah. That's kind of on their retail side. And on the governmental side, because of the dollar volumes that we operate in, they don't necessarily, we will get perhaps a better rate than individual on the street, but they do, it really depends on their cash needs as well. And frankly, in some cases, whether it's even part of their banking philosophy. For example, you will see that Chase is not on this list. Chase offers us about 15, 20 basis points, because they don't really want to fund their bank using CDs. They fund it other ways. They borrow from the Fed. So, rates can spread. We will occasionally get contacted and say, hey, we, you know, we have a need for X amount of dollars for a particular project, so we'll offer you 25 extra basis points. And we'll take a look at that in terms of if we have the cash available to do that or not. But it is a little different than what they term the retail market.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talon.
Chair, good morning, Ken.
Good morning.
Seems like in the past, you've offered kind of a overall rate of return on the investments. You've told us that number. Do you happen to have that in your head, that you could compare the most recent rate of return versus a previous year, the previous year?
I think last year, we were somewhere around 1.2 at about this time of year. Yeah, maybe, you know, 1 to 1.2, and we're now at 2.01 as of December 31. So, yeah, it's seen a lot. And part of that has to do also with the amount that we have in liquid funds. Those rates change frequently. The money that we have in CDs, those rates are fixed for however long the CDs are that we're holding. So, that's a slower-moving figure. But having 40 million or so, over 10% of the pool in liquid funds has helped us with that interest rate.
That's helpful. It seems like there were years when it was less than 1%.
Oh, yeah, it was less than half a percent at one point.
Thank you.
Mr. Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Treasurer Parrish, I am wondering, what is the process when we get the investment income? Does it just get folded into general fund, or is it set aside as a specific pool of dollars?
Well, the general fund investment income does just get rolled in as part of the budgeting process. There is, when you go through the budget, you'll see that there is a number included for investment income. All of the other funds, the interest does get allocated to most of the other funds as well. There are some that are, where even though it's not a general fund, it may, the interest may still accrue to the general fund. But most of them do have interest applied, including the local government investment funds. So, those funds all stay and are typically considered as part of those funds' budgets.
Thank you.
Commissioner Volkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Quick questions. How much does it cost you and your department to manage and administer these funds?
Excuse me. It's not a significant amount of money. It's one of many responsibilities that my chief deputy, Steve Orchard, handles on a daily basis. And so, it would be a portion of his income. And we do have a software system that we spend some money on to help us manage and to spread the interest income and all of that, and manage the portfolio. But it's relatively, I would say, overall, totally, probably, less than $50,000 a year.
All right, thanks. I'm good.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Treasurer Parrish.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to item six, public comment. Anyone here for public comment today? Got to hear all about the investments, you know, more than...
I'm a CPA.
Come on up.
That was more timely than the airport thing was.
Come on up.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Julie Stefan. I still live at 1731 Woodworth, which is right near the Plainfield Meyer. I still run an animal rescue. And I am back. Hi, good morning. I'm here today to talk about licensing laws and to ask why bother having licensing laws if we are not going to enforce them? I license my dogs. I'm assuming you all do too, if you own dogs. If you don't, please call me. I will happily hook you up with one. Anyway, after the last meeting, where we talked about the dogs at Hamilton, we got a FOIA back, where we were able to read through 11 years of complaints against this owner. And in those 11 years, he was told again and again and again to license his dogs. And he did not do that. From what I can tell online, you can go online, and it's public. You can look up if someone's dogs are registered. And as of last night, there are no registered dogs at that address. And my question is, why? Why is he allowed to have dogs that are not licensed, when all of the rest of us law-abiding citizens license our dogs? So, is licensing good? Yes, absolutely. We love licensing. Here's why. Money. First of all, it's money for the shelter. That's amazing, great, wonderful. Thing two, to license a dog, it must have a rabies vaccine. That has to be done at a vet, AKA, for a dog to be licensed, it has to have at minimum seen a vet for a rabies shed. That is a hassle if you don't want to do it. You have to take your dogs there. You have to go downtown. You have to license your dogs. It's a step, it's a hoop, it's something that dog breeders and dog flippers are not going to bother to do. So, what I am asking today is for Animal Control to do its job. I want them to find this owner for 11 years of repeatedly not licensing the dozen or so dogs that we could see coming in and out of his property over the last 11 years. And I am asking that, I don't know who to ask. Do I call the police? Do I call Animal Control? They're not doing this, obviously, so I guess I would call the police. I don't know who to ask to demand that his dogs have to be licensed, just like the rest of all of ours. For any of you who have been following the situation, one of our animal activists was charged with trespassing for videotaping the dogs on this guy's property. So, I wanted to let you guys know those charges were dropped. She was not prosecuted. So, if that's a story that I haven't had the opportunity to tell you all yet, I'm hoping to meet with you all, and we'll go through all of that. But those charges were dropped, so I wanted to update everybody that that's a non-issue anymore. I thank you guys for your time, and I will see you in two weeks.
Thanks, Ms. Stefan. Any other public comment today? All right, seeing none. We're moving on to item seven, consent agenda, and I'll call on Commissioner Antor.
I move the consent agenda. Support.
Moved by Commissioner Antor, support by Commissioner Salfeld. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none. Oh, this is a roll call, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you. Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Antor, Brevi, Volkowski, Hennessy, Jones, Coleman, Melton, Morgan, Ponstein, Salfeld, Skaggs, Sparks, Vice Chair Steck, Talon, Commissioner Talon, Vonk, Voorhees, Womack, Wooden, Chair Bolter. Madam Chair, you have 17 yes, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to move on to item eight, resolutions, and I'll call Commissioner Skaggs for the first resolution.
I move Resolution 16 of today's date, adding a veteran service representative per grant from the Michigan Department of Military and Veteran Affairs.
Moved by Commissioner Skaggs, support by Commissioner Wooden. Any questions or comments on this issue? Seeing none, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 314, 1916, Commissioners Antor, Brevi, Volkowski, Hennessy, Jones, Coleman, Melton, Morgan, Ponstein, Salfeld, Skaggs, Sparks, Vice Chair Steck, Commissioner Talon, Vonk, Voorhees, Womack, Wooden, Chair Bolter. Madam Chair, you have 17 yes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 314, 1916 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On to Resolution B. I'll call on Commissioner Brevi.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 17 of today's date, Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant, the submission for Chief Hazy Cloud Park, and that's from the Parks Department.
Support. Moved by Commissioner Brevi, support by Commissioner Jones. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Wayman, how sure are we that the 30% that's going to end up as the local match, that we're going to be able to do that? And what are the sources that we're looking at?
Not sure of the sources, but could you, maybe Matthew, come up? But I'm pretty certain we have a pretty good read on it. Could we just speak to that?
For the current properties right now, we're working with the landowners and Ada Township that we're closing on, so there's some tax value that the owner's providing to us. And then Ada Township's been providing some funding too, so we intend to go back to those sources. So, that's our plan right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Want to echo the thoughts that were given in committee. One, this is a great investment. One of the things that I, after committee, wanted to pose was, as we move forward with the budget discussion, seeing if there's money available to increase community engagement as we plan for the construction of this park.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, want to echo the, um, the thoughts that were given in committee. One, this is a great investment. Um, uh, one of the things that I, after committee, uh, wanted to pose was as we move forward with the budget discussion, seeing if there's money available to increase community engagement as we plan, uh, for the construction of this park, uh, especially engaging with, uh, the immediate residents, but also the entire community as we're developing this as a regional park along the riverfront. And, uh, just think that this is a way that we can maximize our, our service, um, and just want to see if that could be done in, uh, our upcoming budget discussion.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Wooden. Any other? Commissioner Antor.
Just wanted to point out that this, uh, DNR Natural Resources Trust Fund is loaded. They, they, there's a lot of money in there, and I'm wondering if maybe some of that money could be redirected. I know it would be outside their normal purview, but into the PFAS investigation. No way?
Thank you.
The Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant is a product of the state constitution, and the voters, uh, when they enacted that many years ago, directed within the constitutional framework that it be used strictly for public recreation purposes because it is money that is generated from the mining of minerals off state lands.
Right, I understand that, I just...
So it would take a constitutional amendment.
I'll, I'll go ahead and make that.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Bolkowski.
Yeah, just want to follow, um, I don't know if, Wayman, you've had an opportunity or staff to reach out to the American Indian community. Um, the question is, I, I, I don't know if, if the name Chief Hazy Cloud is honorific or not, and I just want to make sure that as we move forward that, um, it truly is, is that to honor this person.
Right.
We've actually been doing research, internal documents and, um, on this issue, so, um, we've been looking at that, so.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Any others? All right, seeing none, this is not a roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes. On to item six, and I'll call in Commissioner Breavy again.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move, um, Resolution 18 of today's date, to amend the Crime Victim Rights Act grant budget and add one full-time victim witness advocate from the prosecutor's office.
Moved by Commissioner Breavy, supported by Commissioner Wooden. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 314, 1918, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Salfeld.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Talon.
Yes.
Vonck.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 314, 1918 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On to item D, I'll call in Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 19. It's from the Treasurer's Office. It's to authorize collection of certain winter 2019 taxes in the summer of 2019.
All right.
For the City of Grand Rapids.
Moved by Commissioner Morgan, support by Commissioner Vonck. Questions or comments on this? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 314, 1919, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Salfeld.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Talon.
Yes.
Vonck.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 314, 1920, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Salfeld.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Talon.
Yes.
Vonck.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 314, 1920 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to item nine, which is the one-minute public comment of our meeting today. Anyone wishing to come speak for one minute? All right, seeing none. On to item 10, Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Breavy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a brief report from, um, the Community Health Advisory Committee. We met last week Thursday. Um, we had a action request to approve to sanitarians, and we did that, and the sanitarians would be available to, um, do lead, lead home inspections, which is definitely a need, so that will be coming through, um, to the board, um, in the next few weeks, most likely. And, um, the Health Department's also working with the prosecutor's office on enforcing, um, some enforcement issues that they've been having with homes that have had reoccurring issues with lead. And so we'll see what happens with that. Um, I think it's still in proc, in process. Um, there's some issues to iron out, but that will be a, a big thing for the county. And then, um, I'd also like to invite, you know, all the commissioners, if you'd like to check out the animal shelter, just see how the process is, um, meet some of the staff, you're welcome to do so. Just contact Adam's office at the Health Department, and they can connect you, and who knows, maybe you'll come home with a furry friend. So it could be a beneficial trip, so. That is my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Breavy. Commissioner Bolkowski.
Um, thank you, Chair. Uh, a week ago, Monday, the Front of the Court Advisory Committee met, um, just to, um, update folks in the sense that we're still reviewing, um, our customer service opportunities at Front of the Court, always looking at opportunities for improvement, um, and then reviewing the positive, uh, results of the Responsible Parenting Program. So good things happening there. Um, you know, for the listening audience, and if folks want to come out on the first Monday of odd number of months, we meet just next door. It is a great opportunity to talk with staff and others focused on that. And then a thank you to Legislative Human Resources to, um, filling our ranks, so there were a couple of recent appointments and just excellent people, so thank you for your hard work in making that happen.
Good job. All right, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. As Chair of the Finance Committee, I just want to remind everyone that the meeting coming up on the 19th of March is canceled due to a lack of agenda items, and our next meeting is April 9th, not April 2nd, so please make a note in your calendars if you would like to attend that meeting. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Salfeld.
Thank you, Chair. Rules Committee continues to meet. I think we've had four meetings, including our organizational meeting, uh, and I think we're about done. And, uh, so we scheduled a very short meeting, hopefully a 15-minute meeting on, uh, March 28th, right before our next, uh, the board meeting that will be on that day, I guess is our next meeting. So hopefully we'll be, uh, wrapped up by then, and, uh, it'll be, I don't know what room, but we'll be somewhere up here on the third floor.
Okay, thanks for all your work on that 15-minute meeting. Pretty impressive. All right, Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I've had a few discussions, uh, with some other people related to the lead situation, and, uh, one of the things that I, um, stated that it, that our prosecutor is doing a wonderful job, um, the institution of reformative justice with the juvenile system, um, our community, um, my constituents that voted, me and are very happy with the work that the prosecutor's office is doing, but I also told people when it came to the lead that it would be explosive issue in our community if they were to come forth public with the prosecutor, um, maybe, you know, prosecuting people because it would take a lot of education for them to understand just how that process would be. And now that it is public, that it may be, um, it may be something that the prosecutor may be getting to prosecute people because of lead in this poverty, um, stricken community, uh, it's something, I guess, African-American leadership, we're going to have to start going to our publics and constituents and begin to have our own meetings and summits about this lead situation, uh, representing that, um, the zip code with the most lead, um, I haven't been invited to a number of situations with the lead thing. I'm on the city's committees when it come to lead, but I'm not on the county's, any of their committees or task force, and, uh, this was something I tried to talk to, um, I think I talked, uh, I think I mentioned it to Adam, and I know I mentioned it to some of the people within the county when it came up. I'm not sure if I talked to Adam about it, but I'm sure I talked to some people about it. But now that it is public that, um, the prosecutor is going to be involved, I think we have to have emergency meetings in African-American community because I felt that, um, one of the best ways to get some of these landlords to move in would be the same way that the city is putting a lot of fines on, um, homes, and those fines can move over to your taxes. That's been, um, very effective in removing blight, and I thought that that might also be something that would be very effective when it comes to, um, helping remove the lead or a first situation to look at before we be, you know, made it criminal. And maybe it's not going to be criminal, but that is the implication that we get in our community. And like I said, our prosecutor right now is, um, is highly respected in our community. He's done a number of things. He's been one of the most, um, easiest people to get in contact. He attends a lot of meetings. He doesn't shy away from any type, time somebody needs to talk to him, and I really warned against bringing him into that situation like that because I thought it would be very explosive in the community. So that's basically all I have to say about that, and I hope we can have another discussion, or if it's not as an explosive issue as I'm feeling it's going to be for my community, I would like to be brought in on some meetings just to know exactly how the prosecutor is going to be brought into it, so when I'm asked by my constituents, I can explain it to them because we believe poor people that can't afford, uh, to get lead out of their homes may be in prison, and we don't think anybody should be in prison because they don't have the money to repair their homes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other reports before we move on to miscellaneous? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Just a brief report from a Lake Shore regional entity. We did finish out our fiscal year of 2018 with the final financial reports, and it reported an approximate $13 million operating deficit, uh, for that year. We have looked at covering most of that, but specifically thanking again the county for all of its hard work in, uh, in obtaining approximately 3.5 million from the legislature to apply against that, and also that we will be making our draw on the auxiliary ISF agreement, which we had approved here as, well, it's probably been six months ago now. Uh, so also thank you for the county's participation and support in that regard. Uh, it is, uh, it's almost enough to cover that deficit, but not quite enough, so we still continue our conversations.
Thank you, Friar. Continued work on that. Any other reports? All right, let's move on to item 11, miscellaneous. Commissioner miscellaneous today, Commissioner Antor.
Yeah, I just kind of found it kind of ironic. We were talking about marijuana today, recreational and, uh, medical marijuana this morning, and I ju, I think I just read where vaping products, flavored vaping products are now...
For minors.
Oh, for minors, okay. But there, is it illegal to sell?
Fire post.
Is it illegal to sell them in retail stores, or just, is that just for minors? I thought they're pole.
I think it's for minors, but I'll double check.
Okay.
Move to 21 to debate.
Really?
Yeah.
There's that age thing again.
When are you an adult?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any, um, Commissioner Talon, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just a follow-up to Commissioner Breavy's report. I'm wondering if we have, uh, hired a new animal shelter director yet? I think Wayman said it was imminent.
I was going to give an update on that, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll wait.
Yeah, we're close. I know, I've, I've, I'm with you. I'm with you.
Thank you.
Yep, Commissioner Bolkowski.
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, just a moment of, um, non-humility during Lent, um, to explain my, um, abstention on working on Community Accessibility Guide, and the non-humility comes in because last Wednesday night, I was with Janet Korn onstage at the Annual Michigan Tourism Conference, and we won an Innovation in Tourism Award for our work, where the really cool part is we, the information we collect on accessibility is embedded in their website, so you don't have to go looking for it, it's right there. If you're trying to find out hours and stuff like that, it's right there. It's cool that that's been recognized as an innovation, and simply to say, had a long meeting on Saturday talking about how we're even making it better, so looking to go from there. So excellent work in our community, and I'll keep abstaining on Experience Grand Rapids. Two quick commercials. Laugh Fest is still happening, so I have to put that out there. My wife works at Guilds Club, so I like sleeping inside, so I got to tell you, go to Laugh Fest. Still a few days left. And then at Blanford Nature Center is their annual Sugar Bush Festival on the twenty-second, and if you come in the afternoon that Saturday, you might see a county commissioner working at the blacksmith shop. I'm just saying that. So come out to Sugar Bush.
I'd pay money for that.
Yeah.
Twenty-second of March, come on out, two o'clock on, so.
Great, Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not going to be doing any blacksmithing. I have about three things. Last night, I and a few other Commissioners attended, and I'm not going to get the exact name correct, but the conservation, annual conservation meeting, we had a very distinguished speaker, I believe his last name is Britt, but I'm not sure if that was true, and I didn't get his autograph, but it was actually very, very informative. I'd been once before. The students at KCTC make the dinner, and it was certainly very good and more than adequate, but just the different, the amount of information, too much probably for me to take in in one evening, brought at home, and I will digest it, but about all the different, not only did we learn about preserving farmland, but we also learned about invasive species, and I know that has come up a lot at our house, because we have a friend who is a conservationist, and she's always telling us, you have this over here, this, but I didn't realize what an effect it really has on soil. So it was very, very, I really, I encourage anyone to learn more about it. They did say they're going to have a fundraiser, Kent Farms at the Bluff on the twenty-fourth of April, six o'clock, and actually, they're going to have a cook-off, four different chefs, and I think you've all gotten something either in your email or in your boxes, but I've made a list of all the people that I think would enjoy this, because Brewery Vivant is one. I didn't recognize some of the others, but what a fun idea to see who's the better chef, I guess. And the last is May twenty-first, and so you'll hear about it again. I'm on the board of Sheldon House. It's their Break the Stigma Breakfast, eight AM at Cathedral St. Andrews, and I will be personally inviting all of you. It's free to come, just to learn about mental health, and again, break the stigma. And let's face it, I don't think there's anyone sitting in this room, or probably any room we can go in that has not had their life affected one way or another by someone who is suffering from some type of mental illness, or just, just the whole idea that mental illness is certainly very treatable and not something that we need to be afraid of. So those are my...
Awesome, thank you. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. About a week ago, I and some of my colleagues had an opportunity to attend the NACO Legislative Conference in Washington DC, and so I want to thank the county for that opportunity. I will confess that I've always been a bit of a skeptic as to whether those are worth the effort, but I'm here to testify that, at least in my experience, it was well worth the time and the effort and the money involved, because there's a lot of things to be learned there, a lot of connections to be made. So again, thank you to the county for that opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner Steck. Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. This afternoon, I unfortunately have to attend the visitation for a friend of mine from high school. His family, sorry, this is a sad moment, his family was recently, he had an overdose, and his brother also died about two years ago of an overdose. So I just wanted to, you know, thank the people in our community who are working so hard on the opioid epidemic, whether it's law enforcement, Prosecutor's Office, you know, healthcare and mental health providers. Just keep this family in your prayers, as they're dealing with a second son, and he has a very large community in the family, or family in the community, so it's definitely affecting a lot of people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. And Emily, thank you for sharing that. I mean, they always say that everyone is touched by the addiction in this country, and it is. We've got a strong community, people sticking together, but it's a problem, it's a serious problem, and it just doesn't affect the person, affects the family, and technicals all over. So to add on to Commissioner Steck, I was at the Legislative Conference, too. I made the mistake of questioning something from NACO, and now I've been added a fourth committee that I sit on, but the three that I sit on deal with environment, energy, and land use. We had heard a report from the DBW about the recycling issues, and the guy that works with us closely was the speaker. He had a presentation, if anyone wants to see a copy of it, I'd be more than, well, can I email people stuff and not be void?
Use your com, email.
So anyways, he spent a lot of time talking about recycling, where it is, where it's going. I know we saw a huge drop-off in the demand for that. One of the things he pointed out was that, you know, the single-streamed systems, as good as they seem, are going to probably be slowly phased out, because in the end, the product is just too contaminated to make it fully work. So there are some solutions. He had said that he, that he'd seen where the need for recycling has finally leveled off, it's not dropping, and it should start the uptick. Part of the driver of that is that when China refused the garbage, it still went somewhere, and it was places like Thailand and the small countries around it with no way to process it, that they've got just piles and piles and piles of plastic and recyclables that have been coming from all over the world. So in a response to that, there's going to be news coming out. China has purchased three old factories in the rust belt of the Midwest, and they're going to be opening up recycling facilities. Why the government of the United States couldn't do that, I don't know, but the downside of that is that after recycling, the end product, which is very highly in demand, they're just going to ship that back to China and then leave us with whatever that's left. I guess that's good and bad, but that's just one of the things, and as a country, you know, we've got to, you know, address that. I mean, if we want everyone to recycle and be more responsive, I mean, more and more communities are collecting it, it's a serious question that's going to be, need to be addressed. But once again, if you want to see a copy of the presentation, just email me, and I'll send it out to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein. Any other miscellaneous today? All right, seeing none, I have a few items, I'm sorry I always do this, but we're still not quite to an hour, so I have a few things. The first thing I wanted to talk about is, I wanted everyone to keep our former colleagues, Janice Schroll, in their prayers. Her son is in the ICU for pneumonia, he's been in for a while, so just thoughts and prayers to them, and kind of lift up that family as they go through that, that issue. Second issue, I wanted to remind everyone, the strategic plan, our retreat that we're going to be doing is March twenty-eighth. I apologize that I wasn't at the second session of that, we were dealing with some family issues, so I do really think it's important for everyone to attend and contribute. If you can't, please provide your comments to staff so that we have that input. Next, lead. I did want to give you an update, I know we've all talked about it a lot. I did meet with some of the parents that were here at our meeting after our Board meeting the following day. I'm so thankful to the Health Department, Commissioner Breevy, and all the work that they are doing, and I am very much looking forward to our update from Adam. I think he's going to be giving it in the next couple of months, but we are really moving forward on that. I'm personally frustrated because, having worked in the legislature, this was an issue we dealt with fifteen years ago, and it's still a problem in the city of Grand Rapids largely, and we really all need to start rowing in the same direction. We've got a lot of different individual groups that want to help out, but I really feel strongly that we all need to kind of weave all that together and start some sort of strategic plan for this as, from a community standpoint, so I hope we move forward with that. The shelter, as all of you know, you probably get sick of my dog posts, but I hear a lot of that from my community. It's an outwardly facing department that we have with our community, and they're making a lot of changes. I appreciate, again, Adam for overseeing that, but we should be having a new Director of the shelter, probably within the next couple of weeks, so that announcement's going to be made. There are some changes currently happening, but then they will be making additional changes and more community engagement, so as you get any concerns from the community, I hope you will explain that, and we did get a memo from the shelter a couple of weeks ago explaining some of those changes, feel free to share those, but that's an important piece as well. Two more things. When I was, my first meeting, I had talked about the potential of subcommittees, and I haven't wanted to push all that out at once, but I want to start thinking about some areas that we might want to take a deeper dive in, one of them being potentially a Subcommittee on Best Practices for counties in general. A lot of that could be, you know, getting information from MAC and NACO and looking at that, just more intentionally. We do a lot of stuff, we're probably the example for a lot of counties, but I think we should, we could potentially take a deeper dive. I know everybody's talked about parks in the past, we may be looking at that. And then, the biggest complaint I get in my community are the number of millages. Cascade has seventeen, and not all of them are special millages, some of them are basic property tax assessments, but I might want to look at some sort of millage review criteria or something, just what do other counties do, what do other areas do, and I would like your input on that before we, you know, maybe we won't, maybe we will, but I would like your input. I'd like to hear from the Board what they think about that. So those are kind of some things I'm looking at, and I, of course, want your input. Some of you I have kind of standing monthly meetings with, I'd love to do that with everyone who wants to do that, I'll buy you breakfast or buy you lunch, but I would really like to hear from you more on a one-on-one, and last but not least, it seems like we're doing a trend. We've, we've celebrated Commissioner Mast, and we've celebrated Commissioner Saulfeld, and today, we are going to celebrate Mr. Wayman Britt for his fifteen years of service to the county. And I just want to, you know, I want to really celebrate Wayman. I, as Chair, I can't, I can't believe the amount of work he has, and having just lost my stepdad, one of the things I learned was that you really need to know the person, and he had a whole military career that I didn't even know about, and I, that's very unfortunate that I didn't know that until he passed, so I'm going to rattle off a couple of things about Wayman, so we all know about Wayman, so please indulge me. Wayman has been here for fifteen years, thirteen of it was as an Assistant Administrator, but some of the cool things about Wayman, did you guys know he was on the Lakers team and the Detroit Pistons? Some of you knew that, some of you didn't, that's a pretty big shot there. I also wanted you to know, he went to U of M, and he was, the university's Wayman Britt Outstanding Defensive Player Award is given annually in his honor, which is kind of a big deal. And I could go on and on, but to be brief, I'm literally just going to list these off really quick. This is some of his community service, past and present, right place Board Member, Governors' Council of Physical Fitness, Michigan Fitness Foundation, Grand Rapids Community Foundation, Board of Trustees, Grand Rapids Downtown Market Board of Directors, Gerald R. Ford Field Service Council, Boy Scouts of America, Kent School Service Network Board Past Member, and I think Wayman was a large part of developing that. K-Connect Board of Trustees, West Michigan Sports Commission, Mel Trotter Ministries Board of Directors, Floyd Mayweather Foundation Advisory Board Member, Kent County Family Independence Agency Board Member, Grand Rapids Job Corps, Corps Community Relations Council, Grand Rapids School of Bible and Music Board of Trustees, Grand Rapids Center of Environmental Studies Board of Directors, and Kent County Red Cross, and that's just what's on the list. I'm sure there are many others, and I'm sure his wife has better stories and better information, but I just want to celebrate Wayman in his fifteen years, so. He gets the school pin! And with that, I will call on, who am I calling on? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair.
Before, sorry, before they do that, I am guessing that they are going to induct Ms. Britt into the sainthood.
They probably should.
Certainly that all those things don't come without someone at home who is holding down the fort.
Right. Dyna. We should do a Dyna Award. All right, Commissioner Antor, I call on you.
Thank you, Chair.
I move to adjourn subject called Chair to Thursday, March twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, at eight thirty.
All right, moved by Commissioner Antor, support by Commissioner Morgan. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned.
I am Kent County. I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County. I'm Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
Mas era Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. Oh, yeah.